All right. Okay.
Muy bien. Especialistas vamos a comenzar.
No, the questions, we'll take those after the admission. Okay. Muy bien. Welcome. My name is Virginia Souza. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of North Santa Barbara County, the leadership team. Currently, I'm the treasurer. The National League of Women Voters was formed over 100 years ago when women were fighting for the right to vote. While we are extremely proud of that heritage, we are also progressive in our approach to our nonpartisan voter education and advocacy. The League of Women Voters welcomes all genders and ethnicities as members now. And we have removed barriers to noncitizens to become members as well. Students who are at least 16 years of age are members of our local league. So our mission is nonpartisan, and that is critical to our mission. What that means is that, as an organization, we do not support any candidates or support any political parties. Before we begin tonight, I'd like to thank our partners for this forum. Our partner is the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce. Thank you very much to the chamber. We'd also like to offer sincere thanks to our forum sponsors, The Fund for Santa Barbara, Santa Maria Times, and NAACP. And finally, thank you to the candidates for sharing their busy lives with us this evening, and to you, the live audience, for coming out to interview candidates for a very important job within your city. Tonight's interpreter is Jose Farias. So I'm going to ask the candidates to speak slowly. Easier. Here are the rules and the format of tonight's forum. We begin with a land acknowledgement. I don't see a flag. We would do a flag if there was one, but since I don't see there one, no. Little ones in the back, okay. Oh, very good. Okay, can you bring that up in front? And we will do a, if everyone will stand, we'll start with a flag. Thank you. Firefighters to the rescue. All right. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. And the land acknowledgement. The League of Women Voters of North Santa Barbara County humbly acknowledges that we are speaking to you within the traditional homelands of the Schumash tribe. We recognize and are grateful for the First Nations, who set an example of how to live in harmony with the natural world. Now, for a few housekeeping issues, I would have to ask the audience to hold any further applause until the end of the forum. Candidates are not to speak to or of one another, but will address their answers to the audience. There'll be no unauthorized videotaping. And tomorrow or the next day, when the YouTube of this forum appears on the League of Women Voters North Santa Barbara County YouTube channel and on our website and on the Santa Maria Times website, there will be no editing allowed of the video. With that said, let's meet the candidates for tonight's forum from District One and District Two. And we will start down here at the end with Mr. Escobedo. Carlos Escobedo. Just introduce yourself, I guess.
Are you guys hearing me? Perfect. Hello, my name is Carlos Escobedo. I represent the District Number Uno. I'm a candidate for reelection to the District. Thanks for coming here. I'm here with you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Maria Salguero, and I am running for Santa Maria City Council, District One.
Hello, everyone. My name is Benjamin Ortiz. I'm running for Santa Maria City Council, District Two.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gloria Flores, and I'm running for City Council, District Two.
Hello, my name is Mike Cordero, and I'm running to be reelected for the District Two council position in Santa Maria.
Hey, thank you. The format for the evening, the candidates have been provided with two questions by email in advance. They will answer these questions first. Each question will be provided a period of time in which to respond. Sandy Boyd, if you stand Sandy. Sandy is our timer, and she has some timing paddles with 1 minute, 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and stop. The candidates will answer the questions in the order determined by a card draw this evening. Everyone drew really low numbers, but finally, it was determined that Gloria Flores was going to answer the first question and be the first person to respond. After the first two questions are answered by all, the candidates will have a 10-minute break, and that's when all the questions will be gathered from the audience. So make sure you only have one question per index card. The questions will then be sorted by Lisa Thornhill, League Vice President, and she's in the back, and Molly from the Chamber of Commerce, our two-question sorters. We don't want any duplicate questions. Okay, so at the end, after that is done, they'll answer those questions from the audience until 6:45 PM. And then we'll close with a two-minute closing statement from everyone. They can either clarify a previous point or bring up something new or just summarize their key strengths. So, rock and running. It's time to begin. So the first question about the qualifications and reasons for running, and we will start with Gloria.
So good evening. So I've lived in Santa Maria for eight years. My background is a school principal. I'm also, I was living in San Diego, and I moved to Sacramento and accepted the job as a principal. And after my term ended there, I went to go work for the legislative office of the state capital. And there, I worked for about seven years, working in policy and working with the legislative. And then also, I began to work in social services. I was also an advocate for the veterans. I was also appointed by the county board supervisor to be able to work on a task force for homelessness and for foster kids at risk. I believe that my skills that I have qualifies me to District Two. Also, I truly believe in advocating for the veterans. I'm also advocating for the veterans. My leadership has also taught me how to deal with conflict, resolution, ensuring that residents in the district that I, and especially the district that I live in, are heard and represented. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for being here. My name is Mike Cordero. I have been living in Santa Maria since 1972. My adult life was law enforcement right here in Santa Maria. I worked three years in law enforcement in Carpinteria, and I came here and worked 36 years here. I knew that law enforcement was a younger man's position, so I decided that I was going to retire. And I was approached by several people in the community and asked me to run for City Council. Actually, I had no interest in doing that. And I thought, well, you know, but so many people came, and people from different factions. So I decided to do it. And I won the election overwhelmingly. And it was a great experience. I have enjoyed this position very much. It is great to work in a community and be one of the decision-makers that you can really have an influence on the direction that the city is going to go. We, my wife, I met my wife here. We've been married for 50 years next month. Yeah. Congratulations to her. We've been married, and we had three adult boys. They all lived here in Santa Maria. Now, we just got one back. He just moved back a couple of months ago from Lincoln City, Oregon. My wife is in the teaching business, and she's on the Santa Maria Junior School Board, and taught pretty much all of her adult lives. It's interesting to hear some of the qualifications that I hear here from Gloria. And I guess, in some ways, we kind of went through the same training, conflict resolution in law enforcement falls very well. And we enjoy the challenges in Santa Maria. And I look forward to continuing on as your representatives in the second district and appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
We'll save our applause till the very end. Carlos, we'll go to you next.
Thank you. Firstly, I would like to thank Gloria and also Santa Barbara, and here in Santa Maria too, and also the community, and also the periódico Santa Maria Times, NAACP, for this invitation. I'm Carlos Escobedo. I'm the product of a dream American. I was born here, San Martín Didalgo, in Mexico. A little town. I moved to Santa Maria, certainly, in 2016, and living in a dream American. My family came here since the 40s. I lived in Santa Maria. Less and less, they started migrating here. My first job here was in broccoli, in the fields, and pescando fresa, pescando broccoli, cutting broccoli, and everything for the food. I was very proud because it's Santa Maria. I started working in the gasoline industry, working with.
This candidate in the right side. Then eventually, I ended up working for Allen Hackett, a community member who has access to higher education. I'm currently working in the Santa Barbara County Education and home students to stay in school and be successful. Part of how it ended up into being a representative was the fact that I'm from Santa Maria. Coming from another country, without just a vacuum of open, I could see there were dreams. I feel incredible. It's how Santa Maria has changed. It's what I've been doing. Muchas gracias to Santa Maria.
It's because of Santa Maria that I'm here. She wanted, but it didn't link it. There's a button in there, but we can lose all sound.
That's part of the community. When I was here in Mexico, I remember a good conversation I had with my grandfather. He was a senior. He said, "I told you that I was going to the US, and you're going to do that? You're going to work your ass off. You're going to work hard, and you're going to have to sacrifice a lot. Work hard." Sorry. And besides that, you have to realize your community. And that's been the motivation for the District Number Uno. I'm the only district that's been walking through from the beginning, from the river to the street. Every house I've touched, I've touched. I've had three pairs of shoes. I've walked through them. Why? Because I wanted to bring this here. My agenda, my agenda is not, you know, we usually have the people, what they need, or what they want from us, what the community wants. And that's been my dream for the last four years. And I want to have the confidence and continue representing the people.
The best district in the city. District Number Uno, Santa Maria. Thank you.
Hello.
Hola.
Hi, everyone. So again, I'm Maria Salguero. I actually grew up in District One. So I attended local schools here and lived in the district. I was part of the first graduating class from Pioneer Valley High School. That was there all four years, so really an original class. '08. After high school, I moved to Santa Cruz to attend college. I was 17 years old and had no idea what I wanted to do, but I knew I wanted to do something, right? In 2012, I graduated with honors, with two bachelor's degrees. And I moved to the East Coast to work for an immigration law firm. I realized really quickly that I wanted to be a lawyer myself. So I came back to the district and studied for the LSAT and then left the state and went to law school. I have been back to the area since 2019, to the district specifically. I've been living in the district. It feels all my life. I'm currently raising my three-year-old son alongside my husband in the district. So this is literally my home. For almost a decade, I've been representing members in our community, vulnerable members in our community as a nonprofit attorney. So that means that I get to represent people free of charge. And throughout that experience, I've been able to see the many, many factors and the many, many issues that expand past a legal case. And, you know, I also, very much like Mr. Cordero, have no intention of running for public office, but I think once you are in this work of advocating for the community, for me, this became sort of a natural progression. And, you know, looking to run for City Council for me is an extension of the work that I've been doing for almost 10 years, which is to represent members in our community and to push forward policy that actually changes lives. So I'm really excited to be here. I want to thank all of you for taking the evening to hear us talk and to share a little bit about why we are running.
Hello, everyone. Again, my name is Benjamin Ortiz, and I'm running for District Two. I was born and raised here in Santa Maria. The district that I'm running for is actually the same district that I grew up in. So I have a very personal connection through this district and to this community. I wanted to start by sharing two skill sets, experiences that I will bring to City Council that will make me an effective council member. The first is related to my education. After I graduated from Pioneer Valley, class of 2010, I went to UC Berkeley, where I studied city planning. City planning is an important set of skills that is currently unrepresented on the City Council and something that I would uniquely bring to the table. It is also, in my opinion, very necessary for an effective City Council. Because of this education, I understand how our physical environment, the city that we build, impacts our social and economic everyday life. As your council member, I will guide Santa Maria to a better future for our neighborhoods, for our community, and for our economy. The second experience and skill set I'd like to share is related to my career. For the past decade, I've worked as a software engineer. It's a career that I began by teaching myself how to program. I worked around the clock and after hours to learn the skills necessary to be successful in this career, and it paid off. It also shows that I am capable of learning new and complex skills rapidly. In addition, these days, I work on a team in my career. And as everybody knows, teams don't always agree on everything. So I have regular practice. I have skills that make me an effective collaborator and effective at getting things done in a group. As your council member, I will collaborate with City Hall and with other council members in order to guide the city to a better future. Altogether, I will use these skills and experiences to fight for and prioritize the residents of Santa Maria. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that question, number one. Question number two. We're going to give you a little bit longer, if you need it, to answer this. Four minutes to answer this one because it's a two-part question. Discuss the top one or two challenges you see facing your district right now and over the next four to eight years. And how will you use your role in City Council to help address these issues? And this time, we'll start with Mr. Cordero. Mike.
Thank you very much. The, some of the most important things going on in the City Council right now are not necessarily in order of importance that we might see them as the City Council, but they're the hottest subject that's on the plate at the moment. I'd like to resolve the issue and whatever it takes to do so, and however it comes out with our labor groups. We have three labor groups. We have one that is resolved, and the fire department is currently unresolved, and of course, the police department is currently unresolved. We just started with them. Although, although there are other things that's, many people would say, "Well, this is more important, or that is more important." But certainly, that's an issue that needs to be resolved. The other thing that seems to hit our, our plate is the homeless problem. The homeless problem is horrendous. And that's not unique to Santa Maria. I mean, that is nationwide. And how do we resolve that? And the way we resolve it is, in this area, is that we have a lot of nonprofits are involved. Communicify is involved. The United Way is involved. There's just a bunch of different nonprofits that are involved in this process. The current methodology is that they're trying to get these people surrounded by resources. We call them wraparound surrounding. And give them options that they can. Work with, get them jobs, get them education, get them homes, get them someplace off the streets. And that is what we've been trying to do now. I can tell you that the United Way has been responsible for well over 100 placements of homeless people into permanent housing. That may not seem like a large number, but it's a large number to those of us that are in the business of trying to take people off the streets. Those are very difficult to deal with. Some people don't respond. They have a different lifestyle that is not, not commensurate to other people's lifestyles. Some of you in this room, perhaps. But they're human beings, and they deserve certain considerations that we need to try to help give them and get them off the streets and into permanent housing. I hope that we can resolve those things in an equitable way that is not overly impacting on the budgets of Santa Maria. And that would be it.
Carlos?
So, as I mentioned, my agenda has been created for the community. Because that's what we're representing. No, Carlos, representing the community. It's something that we always have in mind. Not just for you, it's for us. It's for all of us. In the last few years, in the last few years. Knocking on doors in those conversations have been some of the main issues that have identified. Public safety, the security of the district. Number one, we want security of the public. We want more officers in the streets. In the last four years, we've been able to increase and support, and be able to support and increase the number of officers in our streets. And I also, I'd like to add a little more to what I do. We've been supporting the community in the district. If something happens, it's a problem. There's a lot going on in the streets. We collaborate with the community to attract the police, the Department of Police, all of those agencies. To have a conversation. Because at the end of the day, that's the way we create confidence and work in one way or another with them. Another thing I mentioned is the homeless. Particularly for District Number Uno, that's the side, west, oeste. And we, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. There's always one reason why we, one of the reasons that we're doing this, is that we're increasing, especially here in the river, because it's part of San Luis Obispo. And I don't like those excuses. "No, no, we don't touch it. Don't blame it on another person." No. We're collaborating with the Super Seche Condado of Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo too, working with the super sores together. It was mentioned by Mr. Cordero. The government, also, the government, we have to work one side by one. We can't do it ourselves. Besides, we can do it at a certain level. But we're collaborating with the two sides. All of those excuses go away. You can knock on doors and start. One side, the side. It's what we do as representatives. With the people first, with the citizens first. Because the homeless, the Republican, Democrat, Independent, is what we're representing.
The other big issue on one side is housing. Housing has been at risk for the right time of housing in Santa Maria. We've been having all these developments that just reflect high rates that are not visible for Santa Maria to have access to. So we need to invest in and support all those projects that can bring quality of housing to Santa Maria. And this is not Carlos. This is Santa Maria, the president of District Number Uno. A person who, as I mentioned, has been knocking on their doors, knocking on their doors. Because that's what we're representing. Community, to support the community, and the community will support us. Thank you.
So for me, one of the biggest issues, like Carlos mentioned, in our district is homelessness. So District One borders the river. And as many of you have seen, when you drive into Santa Maria, you know, when you're going southbound, it's full of people that are living in inhumane conditions. And that is not acceptable. Currently, the city of Santa Maria has no plan, has no budget, has no intention to do anything about homelessness. And I understand the value of nonprofits. I myself am president of a nonprofit that stresses its importance in our community. That's why it's working. It's working in one side. And we need to be accountable. As City Council, I will be accountable. I will actually do something. It's not just going out to the river and handing out waters. It's not like people are elected. People are elected to do policy to actually get these done, to move people from the riverbed and get them into permanent housing. And that's going to require a lot of people actors, just like anything else, right? But it requires one vast strategy. And it requires someone to say, "At some point, someone needs to stop making a county a scandal, a protest, or a call to owners and just say, 'We need to do something about it.' These people are always waiting. You know, it's raining, it's cold, it's wet, fluid, inside their own homes. Imagine what they are feeling out in the dirt, right? You go, you know, I grew up in District One, so I grew up taking walks on the river. Good for that, in the audience. I'm a three-year-old, and I don't feel safe to eat that now. And I've also been knocking on doors and specifically the people that live by the river that have complained in large amounts of how people are breaking into their homes, that they're stealing their rights, they're breaking their codes, like they're taking umbrellas and things and that. And I tell them, "The city has no plan, and we can do more." And we all have to agree with that, the wheel. The city of Alida currently has a plan in place. And I look forward to looking at all other powers that other states have implemented to take accountability and have a homelessness, homelessness task force within the city of Santa Maria that actually takes accountability and says, "How do we organize all of these social actors that are already addressing homelessness in our city and actually push meaningful change forward?" It's not just about seeing people out of the riverbed. It's about making sure that these people have a job, making sure that if they have substance abuse, that they have mental health issues, that all of those people are addressed. And I believe that that's why some of the city has a nation, some of the council has a nation, because it's complex and it's hard work, but I'm ready to get it right.
So as I've been out in the district knocking on people's doors, there are two highlights that I've heard from people that are current challenges. that are current challenges that they would like to see addressed. The first one, unsurprisingly, is just how affordable San Maria is becoming. For many of us that are experiencing it has become more and more unattractive. Many of us are living in multiple families' homes due to rising costs and no more. So, for renters, I believe that the city needs leadership that will act to stabilize rents today. Our first priority must be to keep people in their homes. That is the bottom line. The current unregulated housing market that we all live in is causing this homelessness crisis. It's causing hunger, it's causing housing insecurity. And as your future council member, I will protect you from this unregulated housing market. For homeowners, we need leadership that will act to bring truly affordable options to San Maria. We need housing options for students. We need housing options for families that are just starting out. We need housing options for the elderly, and ten more. And we need options that allow for gentle, planned, orderly growth to our city instead of the haphazard ADU implementation every time. And we need an approach that allows for building generational wealth for our residents. As your council member, one of the things I will prioritize is working with nonprofit housing providers to focus on making housing affordable for this community specifically. I will work to bring a variety of housing options to San Maria, and I will work for the thoughtful growth of our city. The second thing that I hear from residents is concerned about the ongoing budget crisis and its impact on the services and programs that we all rely on and love to take advantage of. We seem to find ourselves with this crisis year after year. And that's because the city is not working to address the root of the problem. The root of the problem is that for the past 75 years, the way that we've built the city fundamentally cannot pay for itself. And that's why we always find ourselves in this budget deficit. So council has not challenged the root of the problem. Instead, they've chosen to have programs and services. Because of my education and city planning, I understand how these problems are being addressed and how we're to address the root of the problem. San Maria can consistently pay its bills, and programs and services can create more opportunity for the community to pursue.
Good evening. So, for me, to my... What I see in San Maria, I can talk about. I'm real loud. I go to church. Three and a half. All right. So, I see so many things. Just being here in San Maria, some of the needs of our community. And for me, affordable housing is a big issue because I see that San Maria is experiencing rapid growth. And we have a... Affordable housing is a consistent issue here, and especially in District 2, because we have low-income families. We want them to stay in District 2. I don't want them to leave. If I'm elected, I'm going to push some policies. I'm going to push to see that we can help them. First-time buyers, why can't I help their house? We need to be able to help them to stay here in the city of San Maria. I would advocate policies and encourage affordable housing development programs that will assist our people here in San Maria in District 2. Another challenge that I see is homelessness. It's a public safety. I see that there's a lack of resources. We need a wraparound program for our homelessness. It's not just moving them from one area to another area. It's about getting them and finding the solution for them. It's a wraparound solution that we need. We have homelessness that deals with veterans. I have veterans that are out there. We need to do something about that homeless situations. We need to be effective when we go out there. Not just say, "Look at it and have a close eye." We have sore eyes in our city, and we need to be able to do something about that. As city council, we can make a difference. We can push for things to be changed. We can make a difference with the homeless. Not just looking at them as inhuman beings, but looking at people, people. They are people that still need help. And we, as the city of San Maria, we need to look for that help. We need to find the resources. We need to bring all the nonprofits. If I'm elected, I'll bring all the nonprofits in. I'll buy every church in the city, every clergy I pray in. And we will partner with them, and we will find a solution for the homelessness here in San Maria. Thank you. She didn't put the sign up.
Okay. With that, we will announce that we're having a 10-minute intermission. So, it's time for you to write your questions. I'm sure this is a dialogue that pops some questions to mind. If you didn't ask, then when you already arrived. People that have the 10, please have index cards. Give you an index card with your hand. And someone will bring you an index card to write your question. One question per card. And Molly and these sort of things. So we have about 10 minutes. So that. And we'd rather have some reservations for the...
We're going to start with the first question. We'll get better with that coming out really nice. I mean, these are good, but it's not.
Yeah.
Quiet and take your seats. We're running overtime. Take your seats please and be quiet. Children. Yeah, where's Chris? Where's Chris the fireman? Okay, all right. Back under control. Very good. Okay, lots of great questions. And thank you Molly and Lisa for sorting these all out. All right, let's see, where are we in terms of who starts? This time Carlos will begin. We're going to ask, we're going to give two minutes for each one of these questions. All right, timer's ready and candidates ready. Carlos, you'll be the first and this is our first question. In both districts, roads, road repair, speeding traffic, red light running are issues. What is your plan to improve these street issues?
Hello. Very good. Did you say the street improvement and the red, those two items? Or just speeding? Basically, it's two items. The street repairs, okay. Great question. I think it's a, one of the things I'm really proud of since I got in the council was that since we, since my, the time I ran a vote for a budget, we increased double the street maintenance. Yeah, of course, you know, it's easy to say that they're destroyed. I mean, we just invest last year $2 million repairing glossers. We increased the sidewalks, two of the main streets that are used by the Santa Marians, all of us. And there's more to do, of course. But there's a lot of challenges that comes along with that. One is that money is never, never, it's never enough just to get a sense of, we need at least 10 times that amount to keep it as it is. So one of the other challenges that we have is that vehicle electrification. So every time you pump gas, you pay a tax to the state. And that tax comes back to the city and help us to pay for road maintenance. With these new electric vehicles coming up, we're reducing the amount of revenue out of that. And those vehicles are using the streets and they're heavier than a regular vehicle. So we receive less revenue. Now there, the state, there's, there's a conversation about working how we can balance that. Caltrans has a huge challenge as well in maintenance. In terms of the people not respecting the lights, it's education. I mean, definitely one of the things that I've been advocating a lot for is to have more patrolling, more police officers. And it's, so it's more likely to catch these people. Because if there's no consequences, people will keep doing it. Unfortunately, as we can, we have seen, there's people that has been taking the life of others because they're reckless and irresponsible driving. So, thank you.
So I think that when it comes to road repairs and even speeding tickets and what was it, running red lights, all of that has to do with a budget, right? It's how do we have the money to fix our roads? And how do we find the departments that keep things in order? And in order to do that, we have to look at the city budget. And the city has consistently been in a deficit for what, over 10 years, 10, 15 years? And it's because the city council has made decisions without much foresight. And I'll give you an example. During COVID-19, the city took a grant and hired a whole bunch of staff. When that grant money was done, the staff is still here. So now the city has to figure out how to pay the staff. And that money that could have perhaps gone to fixing our roads now has to go to supplying, you know, the income of these staff members. So as city council member, I will have the foresight to think ahead and not just in the immediate needs, but in the long-term needs that the city has. And our roads maintaining and keeping the order is definitely one of the things that you have to think about when you're making a decision today. You know, I want the decisions that I make today for my son to reap those benefits when he's older. And I think that all of you would like the speeding as well, so that's my opinion.
All right, yeah, so this is a good question. The, there's, there's two aspects I see to it. I think we've talked a little bit, or I've talked a little bit about the foundational budget problems that the city has. And I just want to explicitly say that relates to the condition of our roads. So by addressing the foundational issues with our budget, our roads will improve. The other thing I wanted to say was around speeding and traffic and all that stuff. With my background in city planning, this is something that I am well versed in. Many approaches to these issues involve adding, you know, new, new lights, new flashing lights to get you to notice the speed limit. But these are all solutions that don't work, as we all know. Solutions to traffic and speeding need to change the shape of our roads to make it safe by default. To make the speed limits enforced by default. You don't need somebody there watching you to keep you in line. The road is designed to keep you at a safe speed limit. And so with me on city council, you would have somebody who is aware that there are other options than just a flashing light and would be advocating for a safer, safer structure.
Hello. So for myself, I see it off of Donovan, the roads, the traffic. I see people speeding down Donovan, speeding down the street that I live on, Vicky Avenue. Just racing down there. All the signs of that. No one will stop. People aren't listening. We have to do something different. Our streets need repairing. The streets and our city need to be fixed. And we need to stop saying we're going to fix them. We need to look at the budget. We need to prepare for that. As city council, I would make sure our streets are fixed. I remember we went to a meeting for all of us that were running our districts. And they gave us a number. And I remember the gentleman, he said, here's my number. And I said, so I can call you if a street light is out? If something's wrong on the road, I would bug him. I would show up in his office and tell him this is the road that needs to be fixed. These are the streets that we need to slow them down. And we need to stop acting like, it's just, it's, it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen unless we have somebody that's proactive in there doing what they're supposed to do as city council and making sure that the job gets done.
Thank you very much. Let's talk about the roadways first. The roadways, for those of you who may not know, just the roads in Santa Maria to rebuild them would be about $1 billion. That's the investment that we have. So we take it very seriously. We've hired some people to come in and help us to analyze the roads and see which part of the roadways need to be done first. And then there's a group of people that didn't assess that. And so it may not, it may not fix the one that you want fixed or that I want fixed right away. They take them on a priority basis. And there's four or five different terms. There's a pothole that we're all familiar with, it's just a big hole. Then there's something called alligatoring. And there's several different things that happen. There's some very smart people that do this stuff all the time. And they decide as a rule which ones we're going to fix first and which ones are most in need and dangerous. Traffic enforcement, having done that for a number of years, most people only do those things when they take a look around and the cops aren't there. So they're probably going to continue to do that stuff if that happens to be their kind of, their kind of activity. So you're not going to stop that. You know, that's going to happen because people are just going to do it because they plan. Good, strong enforcement. Enforcement doesn't necessarily mean, right? Enforcement means just that, enforcement, stop somebody, talk to them. Maybe you don't want to write them a ticket. Maybe you do. But enforcement is what it is. And the best thing for that is education, folks. All the enforcement in the world is going to cover over education. Educating these kids in our schools, in the newspapers, in your homes. Education will change that result.
Okay, the timer's having problems with the, with the timing device. We need help from the audience. Got it? Okay, got it. All right, next question. The city and county often seem to be in conflict over issues like land use or funding. What can the city council do to build a more effective relationship with the county? And we'll start with Maria.
So there's always going to be different interests at play. So I'm a federal litigator. I go up against the US government attorney, right, on a daily basis. And there's always so many interests on the line, on both sides. When you are dealing with the county, you are dealing with ordinances that are different, the city ordinances. You're dealing with different laws. You're also going to deal with the state. You're also going to deal with the federal government. I think that the way that the city is able to push forward the priorities that the community has voice or the priorities that the council has set is by being creative and being strategic. You will always have conflicting interests at play, like I've mentioned. As city council member, I will bring the skills that I have to find these meeting grounds, these meeting points of resolution, of pushing things forward. When it comes to the county, the county has a lot, you know, their, their resources are a lot different than the resources in the city. And as a city, we have to be creative even in our relationships with the county and with the state. And always looking out to see if there are any grants or any other benefit that we can bring to the city. So it shouldn't be seen as sort of with animosity as even if your conflicts are directly, you know, in conflict, if your interests are directly in conflict, it should always be with the intention of removing emotion, removing, you know, your personal opinions about it and seeing where is the meeting ground? How can I objectively come to a conclusion and to a resolution?
Thank you. So when it, when it comes to working with the county, I will, I will work with the county as, as an ally, as an amplifier. Their reach is far greater than that of the city alone. One, one specific example I want to touch on is when it relates to homelessness. The county has more resources at the current moment to help us address homelessness. And so far, the city has not taken advantage of those resources and has not been an active partner in addressing homelessness with the county. So that is one specific example of how I would work with the county. Yeah, that's how I'd work with the county.
So the county and the city, the city of Santa Maria needs to work together in order to accomplish what we need to accomplish here. If we're at odds, nothing is ever going to get done. We're going to be still waiting for things to get accomplished. I believe as city council, we should be able to be on the same page, the same team, working together, striving together. Even though we have differences, we need to put all of that aside because our main objective is the city of Santa Maria, not ourselves. It's not ourselves. It's the city of Santa Maria. And the county does have a lot of resources, as Ben was saying. And we need to utilize those resources for our city to deal with the issues of homelessness. So as a city council, I would strive to work together with the county and let them know we're parting with you. We believe that you're an asset for us. We're a great asset for you. And we'll work together to solve the solutions. Not to just think it's going to go away. And so that's how I would deal with it.
Thank you. And the county and the city definitely have some different opinions. And the city and the county do work together. They do do things that mutually accommodate each other. But when I make decisions on the city council, I look at it and have to think what is best for the citizens in Santa Maria, for the people that put me in this chair. That is where I look. I don't look to what is to help somebody else as much as I do to help the citizens of Santa Maria, the community of Santa Maria. We need to work together, but we also have to consider that this is what these people want. This is what my constituents want. And I work toward that a lot. And I have projects that are going on right now, today, that are, are of that nature. And we have to do things that will benefit the community financially. The city doesn't make money at the whole there. They do in some enterprise funds, but we get money through development fees and things of this nature. And those things pay not only the city stuff, but they pay school taxes and things of that type. So it's much more complex than just saying we need to do this together. we need to do this together. We need to, uh, work with the county. It is difficult because they, they have the same interests. You have to sympathize with them. They have the exact same interest of wanting things in their, in their, uh, in their jurisdiction. We have a lot of ties with the county. We have, with the county is, are one of our customers, several of our customers. We've got thirty or forty different, uh, organizations or ties with them that we do on a regular basis. So there is collaboration.
Thank you. So I can, uh, I can tell you what I have been and how I have been collaborating already with the county. It's a, yeah, there's a lot of challenges because there's two different jurisdictions that have a different, different agenda. And, but I think that the most important part of how to build that is relationship based. It's approaching to all of the county supervisors, talk with them, get to know them. Because as I mentioned, it's, it's not about your personal. It's about how you can navigate the system to pull resources. And I have done that not just with the county, with the state, if it's needed, with federal government, you know? We cannot just, we need to put aside our political, personal opinions and be focusing on, as I mentioned before, on how to pull resources for Santa Maria. And there's two great examples. One, the sport complex. I've been talking about for years, years, maybe decades, about the need for a sport complex in Santa Maria. I've been championing to bring 1.5 million dollars in funding from the county of San Barbara to make that a reality. We already purchased the land and it's gonna come to Santa Maria. And it's gonna be located in the west side of Santa Maria. So it's not about, it, it's about how you can create this connection so you can bring resources for Santa Maria. And the second one is homelessness. As I mentioned before, the only council member that has personally been reaching out to the San Luis Obispo county supervisors, to the San巴, San巴 county supervisors, have been on the side, talking with people because that's who they are. And they was mentioned before. It's people with feelings, people that need help. So that's, that's when you make things happen, is when you collaborate. Because there's a great saying that says, if you wanna go fast, go by yourself. If you're gonna go farther, you gotta get it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, uh, it looks like we have three more questions. And, um, we might, we're gonna go over a little bit. So I don't know that we'll get to all of these. This question is, how will you facilitate affordable rent slash housing? And Ben Cortez is the first candidate. How will you facilitate affordable rent slash housing?
All right. So I think the, the first, um, you know, uh, thing I've already talked about is, uh, the need to implement rent stabilization. This is extremely important because it is the thing that keeps people in their homes and, uh, out of houselessness. That would be my, my, my first priority when it comes to affordable rent and housing. I think it's, it's, um, I also wanna add to that, that, um, affordable, affordable, actually, I'll move on from that. So for affordable housing, um, uh, as I've, as I've mentioned, there, there needs to be many, many approaches to, to make this happen. One is collaborating with nonprofit developers. When you have a development that is, that does not need to turn a profit, you have more affordable housing. When you have housing that, um, is more suited to, uh, different life, um, uh, stages, students, elderly, just starting a family, living on your own, whatever it is. You have housing that's, uh, made for you. It's much more affordable than having to pay a, um, pay for a sort of the average three-bedroom home, um, in, in any situation. So I would be working towards, um, you know, changing our, uh, everybody's, uh, every city planner's favorite word, changing their zoning, um, in order to, uh, you know, facilitate more affordable housing.
So I would advocate for policy that encourage affordable housing development. I would also, um, work with nonprofits. And I would seek state and federal grants that would help us with affordable housing. Because we don't want the people of Santa Maria to move out. We want them to stay here. But they can't if the rent is constantly moving and changing over time. So for me, as if elected as city council, that's an issue for me right there. Affordable housing. To be able to encourage the families and for them, for them to know, we're gonna help them, to be able to stay here in Santa Maria. We're gonna deal with the issues of affordable housing. And so for me, it's, it's collaborating with many, many pieces to be able to make sure that this happens for affordable housing. Thank you for the question. This is a very touchy subject for some people in the community. Affordable housing is important. However, I don't believe that the government should be telling people how much they should be charging for rent. That's something that should be set by the economy itself, by the market. And that, if you start doing that, who, somebody's gonna pay for it. That, that is not gonna just happen and go away. If, if, if the cost to run this place is a thousand dollars, then there has to be a thousand dollars at the end of the month, whether you're paying it or whether the state's paying it or whether the county's paying it or the city. Somebody has to pay that thousand dollars so that the person, the property owner can continue to profit, to make, to make their business, to keep the property up. So I don't believe that the government should be involved in your life when you don't need them. The market will set itself. The market will have, will have a way of handling that because there is no profit in it if, if someone has a number of houses and nobody's staying in them because you're charging too much money. You're not gonna make anything. So a hundred percent of nothing is nothing. So there's an incentive to keep it at a certain level. What that is, is set by the market. Don't let yourself be fooled. There is eons of information that market setting rent control has caused serious decay in the part of many communities. You could read that on Google. I don't have to tell you about it. It's there for you. And that's it for the market for the rent control.
What's actually affordable? That's a good question that every, nobody has, like, you know, everybody's trying to figure out what's affordable housing. And during the last, uh, couple of years, I have been the only council member that has officially anonymously opposed giving incentive to out-of-the-town developers. It's, uh, and that's, and that's developments that just bring market rate, higher rent, that do not help our community to improve, to fulfill the American dream of owning maybe a small apartment, then maybe another bigger house and so on and so forth. And it's not been, I, I've been the only soul and the sole voice in the council that has been opposing that. And because there's different ways to reach to affordability. And one is to get the right kind of house in Santa Maria. We cannot afford to give money away for taxpayers' money. So big developers can build the house that basically a good chunk of Santa Maria cannot afford. So that's one way to really address the, of the issue of affordability in Santa Maria. Thank you.
So I wanna start off by saying that I'm the only candidate running for Santa Maria City Council District One that is fundraising money that is not supported by PACs that preserve landlord and developer interests. So when we talk about pushing for community-based affordable housing, we have to really think about who is backing our campaigns and what is our motivation, right? We talk about the Vernon Group as being a bad, you know, example of subsidies and, and giving away city money. And yes, but the council missed an opportunity to, one, be creative and to negotiate a good deal with developers because they are for-profit developers that are going to be profiting tremendously from city resources. So why didn't the city ask for more? As city council member, I want ways to the very last minute, when voting is happy, to bring up these issues. I will be strategic. I will push forward these negotiations from the start. Because when you already have community input that is telling you we need affordable housing, there is not enough affordable housing, that should already be an issue that is in the forefront of your mind in these negotiations. And the city can do better. We should not be handing away, you know, taxpayer money to for-profit developers, but we also have to be strategic because we need affordable housing. So how do you blend those two issues and come to an agreement?
Thank you. Next to the last question, and we'll, we'll start with Gloria this time. We're back to Gloria. This is a good one. How will you address the gang activity in your district?
I've worked, um, with our, um, when I was in Sacramento, I worked with the gang task force. Um, I was able to address some of the issues that were there. And I see here, being here eight years, I see the need for youth that are at risk. We have to be able to come up with a solution for our young people so that they're not enticed to join gangs that are already out there. There's enough gangs here in the city of Santa Maria. Some people say there's not. Yes, there is. And we need to come up with a policy and a plan to be able to address these gang members and to let them know that Santa Maria is not gonna tolerate them bringing fear into other people's lives. They're going after our young people. They're showing up at schools, they're, um, encouraging them to join a gang. And so for me, it's all about setting up a task force that would be able to go into the schools to set up clubs in the schools, to help the young people in schools to find other resources. Having soccer is great, but we need other outlets for our young people today so that they don't feel like gangs are the solution for them. That that's their new home. We need to go after them and let them know. And that's gonna take a whole community, law enforcement, everyone, to join together to let them know Santa Maria has zero tolerance for gangs in our city. Thank you. Well, I've heard this a couple of times tonight. I am the only candidate that has ever run a gang unit for the police department. And it's not as simple as going out and making arrests. If you really wanna change some lives, someone spoke to me here tonight about how decent it was when I was doing that job. So how do you educate people? I mentioned education earlier. You can't just do it with arrests. That's not gonna happen. I have, ladies and gentlemen, I have been to more homicide scenes than any one man should ever have to go to. And they were all young kids. They were all so young, so tender. And I, I, it brings tears to my eyes to think about it. It's education and providing of, of other activities. You can't, the old adage of, like, you can take a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. Well, we can't make everything happen. But if we have these things available to these young people, we're going to make an impact. And there's no doubt about that. I have seen many people come out of the gang culture. I was sharing with you that I came out of the gang culture. So it can happen. And we didn't call it a gang in San Barbara, we called it a club. All of my education today tells me it was not a club. And we never did things like they did now. There was no shootings or anything like that. It was totally different to that. But the whole thing is making things available to these young people that is outside of the gang culture and make it rewardful. And you will change the lives. Thank you very much.
As you guys already had figured out by my accent, I'm not from this area. I'm a bit, a little bit souder in the, in a beautiful town called San Martínez I mentioned before. And then, uh, I moved, my family and I, we moved to a big city called Guadalajara. And unfortunately, one of the reasons why we did a move here to Santa Maria is because of the gang and cartoons. And it is sad. I've seen it firsthand, some of my former classmates disappearing, you know, getting through the, you know, falling through the cracks. And it breaks your heart. But I also have seen what happened when you support a young children, child in the process to, to go through childhood, go through teenagers' time and then connect and be successful. There are some, um, there are many, many great examples of that. And I worked closely with Juvenal Hall students. I worked with some continuations classes. And as I was mentioned by, uh, council member Cordero, Mike, you know, there's, it has to encompass a big team, you know, from families. How do you support the families? Because it's not just about supporting the kiddos. It's also supporting the families. Do they have a housing? Do they have a job? Do they have a career opportunity? Because also that can help a student to, you know, to find a passion, something they're passionate about and so they don't fall through the cracks and fall into the hands of these people that are looking up there to take them with you. And that's something I'm passionate about. You know, recreation, that's something I, I enjoy. Open Street is one of the things I enjoy doing. And one of the reasons of Open Street, it was built in Bogota, Colombia. And one of the reasons why that was created is to address the increased crisis of insecurity. And Santa Maria, we can make, working together, that happen. Thank you.
Uh-oh. See Carlos, what happens?
So somebody said, I think it was Mr. Cordero, we can't arrest our way out of this problem, right? When we talk about youth violence, unfortunately, the majority of our youth that is engaged in gangs is youth of color. District One is the district that has the highest amount of youth of color and people of color just in general. So I know that it's a prevalent issue in District One. And it's, it's unfortunate. It's really sad to see, they're kids, right? We, we talk about like, oh, they're like these gang bangers or whatever. At the end of it, they're kids. They're kids that have needs that have not been met, whether it's housing, whether it's education, whether it's attention. I mean, there's a whole array of issues that need to be addressed for our youth to not be inclined to be involved in gangs. I'm endorsed by our local, um, unions that have apprenticeship programs. You know, when I graduated high school, I was told, you need to get out of here, right? There's nothing for you here. There's nothing for the youth. And I think times are changing. And we have to support apprenticeship programs that are alternatives to, you know, the traditional college-bound idea that we all have for success for our youth. There are so many other alternatives that our youth need to see. There are examples of other professionals of color that our youth need to see that have made it. I'm the first in my family to graduate high school, college, and the first lawyer in my family. And it was hard work, you know? It was hard to search for mentors and for people to look up to. But times are changing, you know? The room is filled with young professionals of color. And there's just so much that can be done to support our youth. You know, they're kids. They just need help. They need the resources. And I think that as council, we can make that happen. You know, we can organize these efforts.
So I've, I've said a number of times, uh, through this that when I'm, uh, looking at addressing a problem, I'm looking at addressing the root of the problem. So when it comes to gang violence in Santa Maria, So when it comes to gang violence in Santa Maria, I take a holistic approach. I'm looking for the root. So by the time that law enforcement is engaged in the process, there's already a number of systems that have failed these kids. And I want to focus on addressing that aspect of their safety. As you've also heard me say a lot this evening, with my background in city planning, I am aware of how the very design of our neighborhoods can make them either a more safe place or a more dangerous place to be. That's something that will be front of mind when thinking about the future developments of our city. Like has already been said by some other people on this panel, when, uh, when our residents, when our youth, when they have, um, resources, they're better off, we're all better off. So we cannot untangle the issue with gang violence from how unaffordable this city has gotten, from how many jobs here do not pay a living wage, how there are not as many opportunities as we need for people of all ages here. And the other thing I want to wrap up with here real quick is that when we address these problems at the root, it is always, always, always less expensive to the city to address that root and not a Band-Aid at the end.
Last question, and the hardest one probably. Carlos, I think you'll be the one to answer. Or Mike, were you the one? Will you be first this time? Okay, all right. This is the last question, and it's probably the root of all of every of these questions. What experience do you have with large budgets? And how will you help add more funds to ours?
Can you hear me? There you go. During the budget, you know, budget process, we knew, and I say that publicly, openly, we knew that we were going to be in a really tough situation. We knew that in the end of last year. And since then, as, so, you know, step back. You're a council member. You're part of five people. You don't make decisions. You have to be able to strategize and build and get those at least two votes. Always, you know, the goal is to get all of you guys together, but at least the three of you. The three. And I've been pushing a lot to look inwards. How this city is using people's money? Because it's not cities' money. It's the Santamarian's that pay taxes. And I've been pushing since then for you, months and months. Okay, we know that we're going to get them. How we can get ready to decrease the impact? How can we look into where we can save some money? What is actually needed and prioritize in regards to that? And, uh, and it was disregarded by all council members. And I voted against it because I, that was not the, that was not the idea of how to use people's money. Just, you know, and now they talk about raising taxes. That's what governments do. We spend money, and then when the money ran out, let's put a tax. Let's everybody chip in. I mean, we're giving developers incentives. Meantime, we're hustling, we're struggling. And that's unfair. And that's come from the people that I've been talking with for the last couple of years. That's the day-to-day Santa Maria that barely can make ends meet. How can I support, how can I explain then that these guys that have millions of dollars do not afford? Thank you.
So my experience with budgets, I've had experience in the nonprofit sector, both as a nonprofit staff and also, like I said, as a leader in a nonprofit. When it comes to city budgets, it's a whole different arena. You know, it's like hundreds and hundreds of pages. And in this last city budget vote, I actually read through the budget and, you know, had a bunch of questions. And in the, uh, one of the new candidate forums that we had, I also spoke with the head of the finance department. And I was like, you know, this needs more explaining because a lot of the decisions that the council has made is in complete deference to staff interpretation of the numbers, of what these hundreds and hundreds of pages say. As a city council member, I will take accountability and I will make my own conclusions. I won't rely, I won't defer my elected power that I have to city staff, you know? Because when you think about budgets, you know, they say that a budget is a moral compass. It prioritizes the things that are important for a city. And I think our firefighters have a lot to say about Measure U, right? Measure U was a task the city promised, the council promised, that it was to fund public safety, which included the firefighters. Look at them now. It's about a year, and they're still not being paid fairly. So when the city looks to its priorities, it has to honor the promises that it's made. And I do think, I also think that we have to, you know, start by not subsidizing for-profit developers, but we also have to look inwards, like Mr. Escoletos said, and prioritize the things that we said we were going to prioritize.
All right. So when it comes to the question of dealing with large budgets, I'll admit that it's not something that I deal with in my day job. And I think it's important to recognize one's own opinions when it comes to this work. This isn't something that any one person can do alone. So my priority to hire independent consultation when it comes to looking at the city budget, to make sure that we are getting professional input into these very important matters. When it comes to adding funds to the budget, I want to talk real quick about what the budget is mostly made up of. Most of the budget comes from property tax and sales tax. I've been talking a lot this evening about the property tax aspect, the way that our city has built for the past 75 years and how that has not been enough to even pay for those developments and maintaining those developments. The other aspect of that that we can control is the sales tax. And so when it comes to increasing sales tax revenue, the thing that I really want to see and think it'll be pushing for is for better support for our small and local businesses. We need our small and local businesses to be successful in order to raise revenues. As an example, I'm having another time here. But a few months, almost a year ago, the city made the decision, the planning commission made the decision to okay another Chick-fil-A in Santa Maria at the expense of the space that would have been six to eight small and local businesses.
So for me, the budget is something very personal. As a city council, we should know what the budget is. We need to be really transparent with our constituents and let them know where our budget is, how we're spending our money, understanding where the money comes from and what we're doing with it. I think that's so important as a city council, that we're involved with where our money is going. Why are we spending our money over here instead of spending it over here? Safety is a priority for me. And how can we sit here today when we have our amazing firefighters right there in the back that are still without a contract? That's part of our budget. That's something we should be, shouldn't even be here today. We shouldn't even be talking about that today. That should have already been resolved. So the budget is huge for any city council, because that is something that we need to work for. We're talking about safety in our community. Every time I hear, and I live by the ambulance, every time I hear an ambulance, I think of our firefighters and all that they put on the line for us. And I want to say thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. The budget. I will admit that that was one of the more difficult things that I had when I first started. I want to mention the chairs that we sit in. As we sit in these chairs, we actually stand on the shoulders of the many, many people that took those chairs before us. And let me say something about them. I've heard some criticism about them, about how we did this for the last 75 years. Santa Maria, during the worst economic times that we can all remember. We went through that and never laid a person off because of our budget. We did take a person out. And we reclassified a person. I think that's amazing. And we did that with the existing budget that we had. So our budget abilities are much more capable than some people may think they are. And we need to recognize that as an achievement. Not laying one single person off. How many people do you know that lost their jobs during the pandemic? And we didn't lose one. I wish that I could speak more about the budget that we have now. We're in litigation, and I've been told that I can't speak to the budget regarding the fire department. I wish I could. But I can't. And they know. And I have many contacts on the fire department that I'm still close with, past and present. So as a first responder, the budget is a concern that I think we are addressing right now.
Thank you. That concludes the portion of our forum from our audience questions. And now we'll close with a two-minute recap from each candidate, beginning with Maria. So I'm going to stand because I was told people can't see me in the back. In these last two minutes, I want to thank again everybody who came here to listen to us talk today. It is so special for me to be here today, to be here with my family, with my husband. You know, my parents came to this country many, many, many years ago from Sinaloa. And they came with nothing but the desire to thrive, right? And here they are. You know, my brother's here as well. There's a lot that needs to be addressed at the city council. And I can tell you all the skills that I have to address them. But at the core of it, I want you to leave knowing that I'm grounded in this community, that this is my home, that this is where I grew up, and this is where I'm raising my son. And this city is special to me. And I wanted to say it, even if I'm not elected, you know, this November, I'm going to find another creative way to continue doing this work, because it's not about the position, right? It's not about the women's glory, the photos, as the flash was on. You know, it's about doing the work. It's about putting community first. How do we put community first? So I again want to thank you all. And my name is Maria Saguero, and I'm the 31st Santa Maria City Council District One.
Thank you all for being here this evening. I really appreciate you taking the time to come out and get engaged in local politics. I wanted to wrap this up with highlighting a few things I didn't get to talk about earlier. I am a very community-focused candidate. Right now, in the campaign, you know, that looks like knocking on everybody's doors and listening to beats in quick. But I want to be clear with you all here now. That doesn't end on election day, that will continue. In addition, I plan to hold regular roundtable discussions and meetings and just finding more and more ways to be proactive, to be proactively accessible to the community. I think it is very important that elected officials make themselves available in this way. And I am embodying that. I also want to leave you with one last thought, almost a call to action. I want to ask residents to ask for more. The city has been giving us the bare minimum for far too long. Demand more. Demand that your council members meet you where you're at. Demand that your council member believes in a future for Santa Maria. A better Santa Maria is possible. Should you elect me on November 5th, I will work tirelessly for you and for a better Santa Maria for us all. Thank you all.
I also want to thank everyone for being here. My amazing husband of 47 years, he's such a lucky guy. I have my son that's here. He's assisting boarding there at the prison, his prison, and my daughter-in-law. And I have some pastor friends here that came to support. And I'm just so grateful to be here. I feel very honored to be part of sitting up here with the city council. And I'm just excited about what is happening here in our city. Some good stuff is happening. My whole platform has been, it's time for change. And I truly believe it's time for change in 2024 for Santa Maria. And if elected, I'll work my hardest, the best that I can, to make sure that Santa Maria is a city that is thriving and that it's a safe place for families. We don't want our small businesses to go away. We want to keep them here in Santa Maria. And I'll work hard for that. So I'm so grateful for being here. Thank you for coming and hearing all of us. And thank you, my firefighters back there.
Thank you. I want to start out by saying that Santa Maria, I was born and raised in Santa Barbara, but Santa Maria has always been a part of my life. My family members lived in the government housing out on the airport at the back of Wall Park. And we come up often. I didn't know what that meant. Had no idea that I would come back here someday to work. The important thing is that we continue to move forward, and we are moving forward. We're moving forward with a number of different projects that are going on. We're bringing housing in, we've got businesses in. While I've been on the council, we've got AT Still. And AT Still is a college/university that is teaching on medical field. We involve ourselves more closely with the Hancock College, with the Chamber of Commerce. All of those things are important. That's proven. I don't have, I don't have to ask you to go anywhere to prove that. It's proven right here, right now. I'm tested already. My commitment is unwavering. Raised three children here in Santa Maria. Local schools. My wife has dedicated her life to education. I've worked with, as a first responder, has required things that most people cannot really understand. It's not a PSD kind of thing, but the exposure that I've had over my years sometimes causes me to think about, did I do that? And I'm proud of what I did. And I want your vote. I want to come back to the city and I want to work for you. And I hope that you'll consider just doing that. It's time for us to move on to the next step of where we are here in Santa Maria. And I can take you there. Thank you very much.
Andrew Miller. That was the name of a very good friend of mine. My first best friend in Santa Maria, rest in peace. He was part of a club. He was part of a club, was part of, and founder, Toastmaster by Santa Maria. And he taught me, he gave me one of the best gifts you can receive from a person. He was this guy that would be up there picking up trash, cleaning this, cleaning that. And he was doing well, you know, he would have good income. But still, he was up there picking up trash, doing all this sort of volunteer work. And one day I asked him, "Why do you do that?" And he said, "Carlos, in Santa Maria, like in life, you first need to invest in the community. And the community will invest back at you." And that changed my perspective of life. Because, you know, when I got into the candidate race in 2019, I showed up to that door for the first time, bringing a lot of experiences, actually helping Santa Maria. And now I wanted to do more, I got into politics. But not to be a politician, but a public servant. Because I love this community that had welcomed me and my family in such an incredible way. I want to belong to something bigger than myself. And for that, there's no way for me to repay that to this community, to this country. And when I became US citizen, one year before running for office, down there in LAX, in L.A., sorry, in the convention center, there were like 2,000 people. And the judge asked us one question. You guys already made it, so now you have to make a decision. You can be another one in this country, you know, you're on the other side already. Or you can give back to this country that has welcomed you. And since then, I registered to vote. And it will be an honor to keep serving Santa Maria as a representative for this one. Thank you.
And that concludes, that concludes our candidate forum for city council. I hope everyone's as inspired as I am, with the good quality of people that are willing to serve the community. I hope we've all had a chance to network with one another because there's so much impact we could make if we're all connected, working together. We had a civil discussion, we had disagreements about some of the issues. And yet, it was all very civil, and we should be very proud of how we behave in Santa Maria. So go forth and vote November 5th.
Thank you. Saludos a todos y muchas gracias. Good to see you too, thank you. Saludos a todos y bienvenidos y gracias. Y salir a votar el 5 de noviembre, no se les olvide. Ya nos están mandando citatores a ustedes, que pasen muy buenas noches. Hasta otros, vamos a estar en dos días en la ciudad de Lonco. Saludos a todos y gracias.